So, I'd like to clear the meeting open and start with apologies first of all for councillor Noon and councillor Staines.
Enter your statement about the water reservoirs filling up in Dunedin, maybe.
Are there any other apologies? Okay.
Move.
Moved councillor Wilson, seconded councillor Butcher. All those in favour of accepting the apologies say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Done. Wonderful. Confirmation of the agenda. Any additions? Corporations? Someone like to move that the agenda is fine as is? Councillor Wilson, councillor Stevenson, all those in favour?
Aye.
Good. Declaration of interest. We've seen a few of these now, I won't bother reading it out. Just to be reminded that if we have any interests, I believe sitting back seems to be appropriate. Councillor Brown has already indicated that he wished to sit back for item five and... Four and five? Right.
Can I just ask a question about that?
Certainly.
When people do step back, sometimes it's because, like councillor Butcher the other day, they were actually on the hearing and needed to step back. Other times they have a particular financial interest, other times it can be something very light. And I just think it's good protocol, though not necessarily, but just good protocol for people to declare the reason that they're withdrawing back. I know they don't need to legally, I'm just saying that morally I think it's a healthy thing to declare the reason that you've withdrawn.
Question for you councillor, would you ask also that that reason be recorded?
If they so wish. I think it's good practice.
Right. I don't know that there's a precedent before this. I'm not prepared to suggest one way or the other.
No, I'm suggesting this is voluntary, actually.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. And if people want to voluntarily do something, I'm sure we'd have no objection to that. But I don't believe that it's necessarily something that needs to be done. If people are comfortable to sit back and simply have it noted in the minutes that they are sitting back, I don't believe there's any reason to say why. But if people want to say why, I'm sure there'll be no objection. So, declaration of interest. Straight into part B, naming of new roads, Heathfield subdivision Moskhill. We have a report from Bruce Hall. G'day Bruce.
Hello.
Great beard you've got.
I meant to trim it before today.
You're going to end up looking like Gandalf the Grey, you realise that? It's gonna spread.
It's been slowly spreading for years.
Yes, if you could let us know briefly what we should be picking out of this paper.
Right, this report, it's quite straightforward. The names are unique within the city and are quite appropriate for the subdivision. And the developer has indicated he will continue to use the theme in the next stage. Sorry. Nice and easy that one.
Right. Are there any questions? Anyone has? No questions at all? Moved by councillor Hudson, seconded by councillor Wilson. All those in favour? Wonderful. On to item five.
No advance on Mea Caluna. No advance on Mea Caluna?
Naming of roads at Glenrothes Estate. A wee bit more to this one, do you think?
Yes. The two roads that will be vested in council, the names got forward for those are fine, there's no problems whatsoever with that. The names they have suggested for the private ways are a little bit more problematic in that they don't strictly meet the guidelines. Although they have been supported by the Moskhill Tyre and Community Board, to accept them would create a certain precedence in the naming of private ways that they don't necessarily need to meet the criteria as strictly as other roads.
Right. It's all fairly clearly laid out. I did have one question, and that is that the alternatives offered seemed almost deliberately awkward. And I'm wondering, is this a situation that we need to somehow not encourage? And do we have a method for not encouraging it?
It certainly took a while to get to this point, and I suspect that they were being slightly difficult. But at the end of the day, there's probably not much we can do. We can steer them in the right direction and that sort of thing, but if they insist on that's what they want forward, we've kind of got to go with it.
And you're fairly happy that the weight that the community board put behind it is a fairly strong kind of a weight? Like they didn't have any marginal reservations?
No, my understanding was it was the alternatives that they disliked.
Okay. Yes, I could understand them not liking the alternatives. Whoever came up with them was imaginative at the very least. So, does anyone have any questions, Mr Hall? Councillor Wilson?
I would clear an interest in that I think the developer on the site is my husband's uncle by marriage. Having said that, I have to say that if we looked at the discussion we had over the naming policy, I'm really surprised with the name Roblin. And my perspective here is, and I don't have any, I haven't talked to them about this or anything, Roblin is a name that could be easily misspelt or hard to spell correctly if it's emergency looking for an address. And I think that was one of the criteria we looked at. And equally, that it sounds like Roslyn, which would easily sound like Roslyn to a lot of people and send you in the wrong direction. And if middle names are totally pertinent, then maybe my husband's aunt's middle name would be more appropriate, which is Margaret, which isn't one in Dunedin, but that isn't one off at up to us at present. But it's a blended name, which isn't a proper name, and I think under the policy, the question is, is there a policy? I thought we had a policy that said that we look for real words or real names, and this is a blend.
Yes, we do. Again, it comes back to what the developer is insisting is their preferred. Their preferred name. And we have certainly sat down with these people and had a couple of fairly long discussions with them, and emails back and forth. It literally took two months to get to this point.
Another question from the chair, Mr Hall. Do we have a realistic option in basically turning this down and telling them to come back and do something better?
It's a slightly progressive one.
You can. I don't know how the developer would react to that. The last time we talked to them, they basically said, "If none of these work, name it yourself." I mean, if you didn't want to accept that, then I think we would need to go back to the developer.
Right. And Bruce Hall Drive isn't really an option, I take it?
No. No, both of them are already used.
The Cull Crescent has not been used from the previous papers, so it could be now used in this one.
So, we have something of a difficulty. Are there any further questions?
I'd like to move the recommendations as set out in the paper.
Okay. We've got a mover in councillor Butcher, seconded councillor Bezette. Are we done for questions?
I had a question.
Yep.
And that is, the names that have been supplied as alternatives, are you well practised in the pronunciation of those?
No. That's part of the difficulty, is they're not easy to pronounce. And certainly, they seem to be alternatives, and spelling for one of them.
Yeah.
Which inevitably would lead to differences in pronunciation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, a couple.
It's probably taken six or eight hours to get to this point.
I have a question about the blended name. Who, if the name is applied to a private way, I take it that the only people disadvantage to the people that live there?
Yes.
Thank you.
And first...
Sorry, councillor Stevenson is next.
Okay. First, my question was, can we possibly take one and two separately? I mean, they're not divided.
I don't think we can.
The recommendations?
Can we? All right, we can number them one and two and take it separately.
Okay. And then my question is, so that I take it that there's no, the policy fits the first two drive names, because they're Scottish history and that's relevant all terms of the area. But the second one, they both don't fit the policy, being the private developers' names or blending of the names, and no real association with the neighbourhood?
Apart from the, both the families have owned land in the area for, in recent years.
Okay, not a long history.
Not a long time, no.
Okay. So, yeah, I'll leave it to debate. Councillor?
Councillor Collins, you have a question?
Just putting me up on with the man, said there's not many homes involved here, they are the people that will affect more than anybody, and there's not too many of them. I presume they're happy with the suggested name?
Well, it's all empty sections at the moment, so...
Mr Hall, the safety concern that councillor Wilson brought up, of, you know, a fire engine going to Roslyn instead of Roblin, is this something that you think is a real concern?
It's possible, I suppose, although normally people would mention a road name and a locality. So hopefully, that's a confusion that wouldn't happen.
Councillor Butcher?
Just a question. Wouldn't it come up on a screen these days when you phone in an emergency? Something would go Google Maps coming from there?
Yes.
I would have thought that would be useful.
I'm sorry, are you waving your pink phone at me?
Any further questions? All right, debate then. Anyone got anything to say?
Yes.
Councillor McPavish?
I'll happily support number one, I will not be supporting number two. I think it does set a precedent, and I think we've got a road, we went to the trouble of getting a road naming policy, presumably because we, as a city, decided that there was some sorts of naming that we didn't want to endorse. And this is, I think, quite clearly contravening their policy, and the same as I did last time round, that we had something that was clearly contravening the policy, I would be voting against this, because I think that it does set a precedent, which is not something that we should be doing as a council.
Right. It seems we have a wee bit of voting against. Councillor Stevenson?
Likewise, I'll be voting for number one, because there's a Scottish name, there is a Scottish affiliation with the area, but not number two. I think our policy quite clearly says that you need to name something because it has a long-term affiliation with the area. The fact that it's a short-term owner's, family's name, or individuals and their family's names, it's just setting a precedent. We will have people wanting to name subdivisions and houses, streets and alleyways after wives and children, or whatever it is that pleases their sense of self at the time. These are going to be there for a very long time, and it's good if it reflects the long history of the area. We're going to make a clear message right here and now, that, you know, these names are not appropriate, and the developer can come back with further names.
Okay. Question from me first, from Mr Hall. If we approve recommendation one, but decline recommendation two, do we need to come up with an alternative recommendation, or will you simply go back to the developers and say you're going to have to do better, boys?
Our first instance, we would go back to the developer and discuss it with them.
Okay. So we don't have to come up with any alternative? Sorry, councillor Hudson, and then councillor Thompson.
I think we're trying to be too prescriptive, and to say that people have not had a long association with the area, they've owned the lane since 1980, which is 33 years, is quite a long history in my view. And if they want to combine their names of Sydney and Robbin and Lynette and Robbin to name this lane, I can't see why we're objecting.
Councillor Thompson?
Well, a big part of me would just like to say, let them call it whatever they want, it's their lane. But I'm rather attracted to both Scowry and Lossymouth, and I think Lossymouth Lane has quite a nice ring to it, and I would be quite supportive of that.
Councillor Collins?
A question, Mr Hall. What weight did you give on the preference of the owner or whatever of Silver Springs to name it Murray Patterson Drive? What was that connection?
We did not receive that letter until after the report had gone, it had already been sent to the Moskhill Tyre and Community Board. It was available for them to look at, so we didn't know that was even a suggestion until quite later on in the piece.
Subsequently find out why he's mentioned, what is the connection?
It's, yeah, that's the name, Murray Patterson owns the company that is doing the development.
So there's other people just mentioned below, is that right? Okay.
Right. Councillor Bezette?
I mean, I'm a bit like councillor Thompson, I'm inclined to let people name what they like. But anyway, and why we would want to name lanes after villages in Scotland or wherever escapes my understanding. Also, the two names that are suggested, I think there is a minor digression away from our policy, but if you stick absolutely to the policy, as councillor Hudson has already alluded to, we've been far too prescriptive. I think in a situation like this, councillors talk about their own preferences, and this is how these names have come about. I had no difficulty with those names whatsoever. Lossymouth, well, you know, it's village in Scotland, come on. You just, it's about as meaningless as Roblin Place. And Roblin Place and Roslyn, I mean, you've got a five brigade, you want to go to Roslyn, you're not going to say Roslyn, you're going to say Roblin Place. So, it's...
I've seconded it. So you're quite happy with recommendations one and two? Councillor Wilson?
I'm not going to vote, because I've, but I'm, I'm going to say, but I'm, sorry, this isn't about people necessarily who live in these places, the people who may be there and don't know the area particularly well when they call emergency tanks, it's not just about the people who live there. And that's where I think we had a really gotten really robust debate when we actually did the policy, and why I have taken an interest in this topic, because it is about safety and about people who may be visiting there. My cellphone, I regularly turn off and I never have it on location. If I'm using that, which I would be more often than not in a fire, and these days would use a cellphone rather than a land-based phone, which may or may not be subject to being fired, the fire itself, you wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to tell where you're from. So I actually think there is a real risk, there is actually a Roblin's Place in, having said that, there is places called Roblin, and I've now developed on the internet, there are places, and I'll do it, it's obviously a word, so I apologise for anything I may have intimated later, earlier, sorry, but Roblin, there is actually a place called Roblin's Place in Selwyn, County. It's Selwyn in Canterbury, with exactly the same name, but it's an unusual one. I hadn't heard it before, so I apologise, but that's not why it's been called that.
All right, everyone's had a fair crack. Let's have a vote on recommendation one.
Does this have my right to reply?
Ah, pardon me. My apologies, councillor Butcher.
Okay. Well, I'd like to say that Bruce has said that it's already taken a couple of months going backwards and forwards to get to this point. And it's come to us to make the decision, we're elected to do that, sometimes we have to make decisions that not everybody agrees with, but thank goodness we still get to make decisions, that's what democracy's all about. And I've got a huge amount of respect for anybody who wants to buck the system and call it a funny name that doesn't quite fit with the policy, because I think that's awesome and more people should do it. So I'm hoping that you all agree with that and vote for it too.
All those in favour of recommendation one?
Aye.
Against? Recommendation one's fine. All those in favour of recommendation two?
Aye.
Can I have a show of hands, please?
I'm cast for division, actually. I'm sorry.
Division call for?
Councillor Eadman?
Aye.
Councillor Bezette?
Aye.
Councillor Butcher?
Aye.
Councillor Collins?
Aye.
No.
Councillor Harrison?
Aye.
Councillor McPavish?
No.
Councillor Stevenson?
No.
Councillor Thompson?
Aye.
Councillor Witherall?
Aye.
Councillor Maye?
No.
Councillor Paul?
Thank you very much for that. Thanking you. On to item six, funding assistance rates review. Thank you, Mr Harrison, how are you today?
I'm very good, thank you, Mr Chairman. I cocked up a blue shirt. Very nice. I'm told under the cameras that it disappears.
I'll get them both. Wish I'd brought my sunglasses.
Anything you'd like to highlight in the report?
Just to, thank you, Mr Chairman. Highlighting with the report is significantly, this is for information for the committee, acknowledging that it's come up pretty quickly, there's a short timeframe to read and evaluate the several rings of paper that come with it, and to respond at this time, but also it's going to, this is the first submission on a two-stage process or a multi-stage process, the next one's going to come after the elections around the end of the financial year. So it's also for the committee the opportunity to set in place power, the approval for submissions. Thank you.
Questions, councillors? Councillor McPavish?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first is about the different approaches that are being proposed as options. Which one of those most closely resembles what we currently operate under? I'm looking on page five of seven, the sort of A to H.
It's been debated at some length, because no one of the approaches really fits what you call the status quo. My own view is that the differences approach is pretty, is the closest one that comes. But one, part of our submission term, because I'm busy writing at the moment with others, is really why isn't the status quo one of the approaches? Because, is it broken? So that's something we want to put up to actually have them to consider again.
Yeah, okay. And in terms of the timeframes, it just strikes me that we'll probably be wanting to start our own planning processes significantly earlier than the, well, in order to get all of our ducks in a row for that bidding process around the 2015 to 20, whatever it is, RLTP, we will need to be doing planning well in advance of that, I imagine, and that may be, may well end up being at a similar time as this review is going on. Is that going to cause problems for us in a planning sense, in terms of choosing the projects that are most likely to get funding?
It will have potential implications. The intent is to have the result by April 2014, so in theory, it should give enough time to, for us to be able to plan with those conclusions. But there's always been plans with RLTPs and NZTPs previously, and they have missed by three or four months. They're trying to bring them forward, we'll see. But will it be a problem? There is a potential clash there that we need to keep an eye on.
Okay. Well, I guess given that the only other following question I have from that really is, have no problem with the group of people that have been suggested as being part of the group, but it strikes me that because of the potential implications for our planning, it may well be sensible to also involve the chair, planning and environment in that process and in those discussions. Just putting it out there. Thank you.
Councillor Thompson?
Just from my understanding, does NZTA report directly to a minister? Or does it have a board that sits in between it and a minister?
Thank you, it's got a board, but it's, it does report directly to the minister, it's like a mixture of two different components. But there is a standalone board in place as well.
The, I suppose the bit that concerns me, and it is a question, not a statement, but the, it's the last bullet point on page three of seven, on 6.3, whether the NZTA can and should use far as to incentivise particular activities or approaches, e.g. land transport activities aimed at unlocking the future potential of an area. And I'm just wondering if you could, if you have any idea whether there are specific things that are in mind there? And I guess, I suppose I'm wondering whether that's code for redirecting large quantities of it at Auckland, transport issues? Or whether there is something more to that phrase, unlocking the future potential of an area that, I mean, I don't, how is it defined? What is it that they mean? Do you have any idea?
No, we don't have any idea. Once again, we keep on trying to get more information, and there has been some workshops, and the most common phrase coming out and saying they have no predetermination of the end result, and they're just seeking comment and discussion. So, no, there's no way that anybody can answer, within this room could answer that question for you.
But it would suggest that you're suspicious, councillor Thompson, of having some weight.
I would have thought. After response to that, we know from NZTA and the government that the funding for the forward roading work is under tight constraints. And basically, there isn't enough money to do everything that the government might want to do. Recently, they've produced things, they've focused on roads of national significance, they've produced, I'm trying to think what the national documents that produce NZTA, there's an overarching sort of document where they're looking to put funds. There is, I suppose, a realization that as a result of these sort of maneuvers, the far rate could be adjusted to scheme more money in the other areas of government focus, at the expense of, say, small rural communities or places south. That's a potential outcome of this sort of process.
There you go.
If I could just add to what Mr Avery has said, the other side of the mirror for that is that I know that LGNZ and probably a number of other organizations have made the point to NZTA and to government, that it's important to look at the economic activity and output of areas in deciding prioritizing spending. For instance, there is much more economic output from the dairy tankers, the logging trucks and the sheep trucks out of some areas than, for instance, motorways and orphaned. So this could be taken to mean that they could, the economic benefit of maintaining rural roads would be reinforced. So it could be interpreted either way, depending on how cynical one is, I guess.
Councillor Stevenson?
Well, whatever our submission will eventually be, with staff will be working on it, won't they? It'll be to do with making sure that peripheries aren't lost, that just doesn't come about the big meagre parts of the cities, that the only ones that benefit, there are other parts, like the mayor indicated before, that they also need to be included. Plus, increasing the utilization of what you have already, it's not always about sprawling out and doing more. And then there is conflict, and we see that out at Port Chalmers. Here we have a road going out to a port, we have port transport needing to get out there, but we also have a lot of residential use, and now we're starting to have a lot of recreational use with people who are cycling out there. There can be conflict, and we need them to realize that that needs to be addressed. So utilize what you have now and try and address that conflict, instead of always sprawling to the areas of growth.
Okay. We've had some comment, we've had some questions, there's...
I'd like an amendment to the second recommendation, Mr Chairman, that was picking up the suggestion of councillor McPavish to include the chair of planning and environment.
So, item two, recommendation two would read, Finance Strategy and Development Committee and?
Yep. Just the addition of the chair.
The chair of?
Planning and Environment.
Annie.
Just a grammar review, to say the chair's Infrastructure Services, Finance Strategy and Development Committee, comma, P and Planning and Environment, and the mayor.
Right. Second. All those in favour of the amendment?
Aye.
Ah, sorry. Okay. Let's go, let's just accept that slight modification to recommendation two. Anyone want me to take recommendation two? Anyone want me to take recommendations one and two separately? All right, take them together then, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carry it. Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mr Harrison. Item seven. Thank you very much, Gerry and Rachel. I have to admit that I scanned this report and then I tried reading it and didn't find it that easy. I'm wondering if, only for my benefit, perhaps you could, you could perhaps run us by the highlights of what we're supposed to understand here.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Chairman. I propose just to make a few general remarks, just to highlight the report, and then I'd call on Rachel to talk about some of the detail around the different methods. Ministry of Health, they're consulting with the water industry on the grading system, which is used to grade water supplies around the country. Views are being sought to determine if the grading system is to be abandoned or retained. And then the question is, if the system is to be retained, what method of grading would be employed going into the future? The submission in this report, it's been drafted on the basis that a grading system is still useful, to summarise some of the complexities of the quality of respective systems and how well they perform, and also to deal with risks. In preparing this report, we, staff come to the view that it needs to, the grading system, it needs to be simple, it needs to be inexpensive to run and to use. It also needs to be run by an independent body, such as the Ministry of Health, as opposed to the industry itself. We believe the industry itself has probably got a problem with conflict of interest, so it needs to be an independent body. There were three main grading methods outlined in the discussion document and the template questionnaire, and we have ranked those. We believe that method three, the simplified points-based framework, is probably the best of what's on offer. The ministry have been holding workshops around the country with staff from the different supply authorities, and the latest one was held in Dunedin yesterday. Initially, the workshops were only going to come as far as Christchurch, but then the ministry realised they needed to come to Dunedin and offer the, and make the opportunity to attend a lot more easier for people in the deep south. The, obviously, there's no firm feedback from the ministry, they've still got to get, collate all the responses and submissions. Bit of rough indication from what they were seeing around the country was that methods two and three seemed to be favoured, and I hasten to add of the authorities that actually wanted to retain a grading system at all. So that's really a thumbnail sketch of what is a fairly complex report and a fairly complex submission, and I'd just like to ask Rachel just to maybe go into that in a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Gerry.
So the Ministry of Health has proposed three methods if we are to retain a grading system. The first is a points-based framework, and this is the most complex of the three methods to understand and to implement. But this is the option that provides the most robust risk assessment approach, and that's what the really, the Ministry of Health is really trying to include in a grading, the risk assessment approach. The points-based framework is a significant shift away from what we have in the existing grading framework. Merit points would be awarded for compliance with specific aspects of the drinking water standards in the source, treatment and distribution zone of our water supply, and demerit points would be allocated based on a risk assessment of the source, treatment and distribution zone. Risks to the water supply would be identified and preventative measures assessed to determine how many causes are then mitigated. And then you get from that residual risk of any remaining risk, you get demerit points allocated. The second method is an extension to the existing framework, which basically adds additional questions into the existing questionnaire to incorporate information from the public health risk management plans, which water suppliers are required to develop under legislation on risks to the water supply. So the additional questions don't really add any risk assessment methodology, but they do add risk in terms of more detail that comes from the risk assessment and the public health risk management plans. The third method is the simplified points-based framework, and that basically grades the water supply against compliance with elements in the drinking water standards and also in the public health risk management plan requirements. So there's less focus on actual reliability and asset management aspects of the water supply. This third method provides less risk assessment and is obviously a very simplified form of grading. The points are then tallied so that minimum criteria are met to achieve a certain grade. In addition to wanting feedback on whether we retain the grading framework and which method would be used, the Ministry of Health was also interested in hearing whether the existing grading framework should be abandoned altogether, and also who should run it, so whether it be the Ministry of Health or the industry. That's a very basic overview of the three methods and the other additional things that the Ministry of Health wanted to have some feedback on.
Thank you very much. Questions from councillor Thompson first?
Two questions, really. The, when you start building in points, demerit points for risk, then there must be questions about how you apply weightings to those points as well. And I'm not sure, it was like councillor Van De Bees, I struggled with some of the detail, but I'm not quite sure how that's envisaged. And essentially, you could end up with an E-grade water system that's supplying A-grade water under that, couldn't you? Because you could be supplying A-grade water in terms of the quality of that water, but depending on the weighting applied to the risks, you could, in the public's mind, have a, this is probably exaggeration, but an E-grade water system. And to me, that strikes me as being quite potentially confusing for the public, mixing those two things in together. And I wonder if, what your thoughts are on that, and whether that, whether you see that as an issue as well.
The weighting, it's, it is crucial when you're looking at a points-based system. And when you delve into some of these grading methods, you will see that higher weightings are placed on different categories. There's quite a high weighting on bacteriological compliance, there's quite a high weighting on protozoal compliance. And you'll see that in the way they assign points, and it's absolutely correct. If it's not designed correctly, you could get some quite strange or weird, certainly unintended.
What about the mixing the risk factors in with the actual water quality factors into the same equation? You know, my concern, a lot of this, it seems to me, has to be about the public's ability to understand what it is that the city's providing for them. And they have to understand what the quality of the water is that they're ingesting, and they have to understand what the nature of the risks are to the maintenance of that quality. If you mix them both together, do you not risk hiding one or other or both of them in the public's mind? Is it not, is it not better to keep those two things quite separate?
Three, Mr Chairman, I just wanted to use to help there. We've got two main catchments, if I'd characterised, Deep Stream, Deep Creek, which have a low risk, the Tyre, which presumably has a high risk because it's an unprotected catchment. So is that the risk thing that's been covered off? If it is, because in terms of our southern water treatment plant, we've got a physical barrier, and Mount Grand, it's a dissolved deflation system. And my understanding is that you take the risk of the catchment sources and provide you with appropriate treatment if you deliver an A-grade water, but you've got to understand what the risks are, which then determines what sort of treatment you might require. Is that how it works, or is it different from that?
That's correct. You have to do a catchment assessment to determine, and really it comes down to a commercial or industrial or farming activity. If you've got a highly industrialised catchment, which we don't, we do have intensive farming in some of our catchments. Other catchments, Deep Stream, Deep Creek, High Country, Destocked, are very low risk. And so the way the drinking water standards are framed, once you've done that assessment, that determines the amount of treatment that you have to design into your treatment plants, the number of filtration barriers and the number of, and the amount of disinfection that you have to put into it.
Right. Councillor Wilson's next on the list.
I'm going to be utterly optimistic and say this is a wonderful opportunity to get some things right, I hope, but you might tell me I'm wrong. One of the problems I have seen and heard about round the table with the current scheme, and this is a question, am I right or wrong? Is that once the territorial authority gets a grading, that's the grade it has to take into account, the lowest, the grade it has on its lowest water supply. I think that came up in the Botman's Water Debate and the Altrum Extension we did. That if we don't have the water to high standard, we are graded by our lowest scheme?
Each, each water supply, each of the city's water supply systems, of the ones that have gone through the formal grading, they're graded separately. If you have a system that, for example, is supplied by two different water treatment plants, the grading is then determined by the plant with the lowest grading.
Yep.
In Dunedin, our main suppliers at Mount Grand and Southern, they hold an A grading. The Moskew system, which is normally supplied from the boars out there, can be supplied under emergency situations from Mount Grand, it holds a B grading. Can't get higher than a B, B is a very good grading, can't get higher because there's no chlorination, the water's not chlorinated.
I thought when we discussed the Altrum Extension, which was going to cost us, or the improvements, I think were $500,000 or $900,000, we had said that we had to do that in order to lift the overall grade, otherwise the whole city would be rated badly. Have I got that wrong?
Yes, you have got that wrong. It wouldn't affect the rest of the.
Okay. Sorry, that's what I recall, so I've got that, thank you. The question I have then is, the grading system and the risk, what part of that is taking account affordability for communities? Because I've seen a huge number, I've seen a lot of work done in smaller communities than we have in our neighbouring community, and this is why I'm interested about how the other communities or other submissions are coming in with a different grade than we're suggesting, is understanding how that affects those we communities. Because that, if you've got a points-based system that you're suggesting, which takes a high risk, doesn't that jeopardise the affordability of some smaller communities to have a scheme?
First, the first thing to realise is that the current grading system is voluntary. The Health Drink Water Amendment Act 2007, it's all about managing risk, but having regard to affordability. Since the, but what councillor's done in upgrading its water supplies over the last, you know, 12, 15 years, was to use the grading as a, the grading system as a driver for the upgrades. Back in 1993, the grading system was changed, and Dunedin's main suppliers at Mount Grand and Southern went from an A to an E, and that prompted a big upgrade programme. Then when that was completed on the large plants, it rolled over into the smaller plants like West Tyre, Wacko White, and now we're looking at Altrum coming up. But the target set in those cases was a minimum of a C grade, which is still a satisfactory supply.
I'll come back to it, I've got lots more questions. I'll let you carry on.
Councillor McPevish was next on the list.
Thank you. Just a follow-up from that answer to councillor Wilson. Am I to understanding that the upgrades that we've been doing, or the target, the C target, I always thought that was a nationally C target. Was that simply set locally as something that this council decided to aspire for across its order network?
It was set locally. It was a local target. It is, it's fair to say that the main centres around the country for their larger supplies, not their smaller rural supplies, they targeted A gradings like the DCC. They all did it along different timeframes, but it was a local decision to target an A grade for the Mount Grand and Southern suppliers.
So in terms of the, if the MOH do decide to continue with a grading scheme, it will remain voluntary in terms of where in the grading, different TLAs decide that the order schemes are going to sit?
That's the indication we're seeing from the Ministry of Health. There's no suggestion that they're going to make particular grading mandatory as such, but under the law, it's now all about having in place public health risk management plans, where you're managing the risk on your existing systems, which quite often means you're upgrading a plant or you're continually making improvements. Some of those improvements are large, some of them are quite small in nature. Then you've got the drinking water standards themselves, which look at the performance of those plants. And that performance measuring can be in terms of tests being done by an independent laboratory, or analysis of online data coming off the treatment plants. For example, how, the clarity of the water, is it sufficiently low turbidity to have a low level of risk? Does it have low colour? And are dosing sufficient for it?
So in terms of the status quo in terms of the grading scheme, to what degree is that decided by risk and to what degree is that decided by actual numbers in monitoring? And if we were to move to a points-based scheme, to what degree does that influence the, increase the focus on alleviating risk as opposed to actually monitoring quality of water?
It, I think it really depends on which of the methods you're looking at. They're all, they've all got similarities. It's just that some go into the detail a lot more than others. I might ask Rachel to actually comment on that a little bit more.
All three methods still have that strong focus on compliance with the drinking water standards. You've still got a lot of points allocated for compliance with meeting the, addressing the performance and making sure that you're doing the required monitoring for. addressing the performance and making sure that you're doing the required monitoring for water treatment. All three methods, to some degree, add that risk assessment into them. Method one certainly has the greatest focus on risk assessment. The other two have less of a focus, which makes them less robust from a risk assessment perspective. But certainly from the compliance with the drinking water standards aspect, it's, it's rated very highly in all three methods.
Yeah, okay. And in terms of the drinking water standards that are set at the national level, how do they match up with the grading scheme? I.e., we have to meet, I imagine, a mandatory drinking water standard at a nation, like nationally set. And the, the grading scheme is effectively over and above that. So I guess my question is, what is the value added that this process adds? If we're all, if the community is already aware that we're meeting drinking water standards?
I think the grading provides the public with a very easy to understand answer to how well we are meeting the requirements of the quality of the water that they're being provided, A, B, C, D. The grading being voluntary, I guess you could say it is, is in addition to what we have to do as a minimum to meet the legislative requirements.
Okay, so, so I, just to pick up on councillor Thompson's point. If we were, we were really wanting to send a message to the community about the quality of what they're actually drinking in their cup, what we might do is develop a grading system based on compliance with the drinking water standards. What this, this grading system is proposed with the points-based scheme and stuff is doing is it's adding effectively another layer of consideration or issues for consideration on top of those drinking water standards, which is around risk assessment.
That's right, and that, that's what's required through legislation in the public risk, public health risk management plans. So it's trying to bring the, the risk assessment that's done in the public health risk management plans into the grading system to then give the public a clear message on the quality of their water.
Thank you, that's clear, thank you, Mr. Shear.
Thank you. Councillor Weatherall.
Thinking of the questions of both councillor Thompson and Tavish. The grading of water is easily recorded exiting the treatment plant, correct? That's our best data, isn't it, exiting the treatment plant?
The grading, the grading deals with the quality of treatment in the treatment plant, that, that's correct. It also has a, it also deals with the quality of water and how the quality is maintained in the distribution zone. And that's why the grading has two letters. It's in, in the case of, say, Mount Grand, big A for treatment, little b for, for the distribution zone.
So if distribution's owned, then to the council's supply to a property, that's the zone. So if I take the example of the Northern Scheme, which is relatively new, new pipes to hold deal, potentially at that furthest point of the supply line entering a property, we should be in pretty good shape. That's right. But in some of the oldest part of our city, with very old pipes, old galvanised still in many piped parts of perhaps South Dunedin or South Kilda or all others, or Brighton, wherever else it might be, we're putting at risk what in fact is coming out the other end that way. So we end up with quite a variation in the distribution system, which may or may not change from what comes out of the treatment plant significantly.
It certainly, and we, we have got old pipes, particularly towards the extremities of the water system. The quality of the water, it, it will deteriorate, it deteriorates in two ways. One, you can get rust accumulating there, so you get it, it's, it's still safe to drink, but it can, from time to time, you get discoloured water. You can also get a lowering of the chlorine residual, which is really your insurance against recontamination through a broken pipe or something getting soaked back into the main. Just following on from, from that question, one of the, one of the suggestions put forward at the workshop yesterday was to move away from a double-letter grading system to maybe a single-letter grading system or a star rating like you have for hotel rooms or, or, you know, washing machines. You know, there, there are all sorts of ways of doing it.
Yeah, and that, and that would be, I'm saying that, going back to my question. One of the challenges for a city this geographic size of Dunedin is the distribution network and the extreme we push water through, from point A to point B to Z to D, whatever it might be. That's one of the challenges for something quite special for Dunedin, isn't it? Compared to quite a compact city or place that's got quite narrow distribution routes. We've got thousands of caves of water pipe, which add to the challenge to get a grading at the far end of good standard.
We, we, we have long runs, long runs of water pipe, that's, that's, that's absolutely correct. And it, and can be challenging to maintain quality. The grading systems do, the existing grading system does take into account the, the condition of those, those pipes. It's, and it, it, it takes into account whether we're having customer complaints with rusty water, pressure fluctuations, all those sorts of things. And so it does feed into the mix on the grading of the distribution zone.
Just one of the challenges, my system should be better for us than other places.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Try not to belabor the point, but it is quite important to me, so I need to get this clear. If, if I say to a member of the public that we have an A-grade water supplier, I can't prove this, but I suspect that their interpretation of that is around the quality of what they're ingesting. And it seems to me that the point of a grading system is to give clear signals. So I'm wondering why we can't run quite separate water quality versus risk? I mean, because, so that the public could then understand that they have an A-grade, an A-grade water quality, but they may be a high or medium or low risk, the continuance of that for whatever reasons. And they're quite different messages, and I'm wondering why we need to mix them in together? Because you can mix a high risk and high quality and end up with a C grade, for example, which I think to most people reading it would be, mean that we've got low quality water that we're ingesting, when that may not be the case at all. So why can't we do them separately?
So...
Yet, setting aside the grading, at the, at the moment, it, it is separately dealt with, but the, the public would have to delve for the information. They'd need to look at, at the public health risk management.
And that's my question, why can't we make it easier for them? Why do we, if we're going to redesign the system, why can't we take into account what the public's perception of the system means to them and actually make it clear? We've got an opportunity, why, what, what technically stops us recommending that in our submission?
It, it, it can be recommended. I, I guess one of the, the reasons we looked at method three, we were also looking at the, the, the cost of maintaining a grading system. If we go for one of the more complex methods, updating it and, and reviewing it from time to time could be quite a costly exercise. I, I, I take the point, and it's, it's exactly one of the points that was discussed at the, at the workshop yesterday.
Why, why would it have to be more costly if we're already taking risk assessment into consider, into consideration? You know, why is it more costly simply to separate them out in terms of having, you know, a quali, a water quality and a, and a, and a risk to water qualities separately? You're collecting the data anyway, aren't you?
Can I just, sorry. It could be done, it could be a, a double letter system, if you like. One is quality, one is risk.
Can I just give a slightly different perspective? You know, the public takes some, I think, comfort in the fact that we provide A-grade water. From a, a water manager's point of view, in terms of what we supply, we need to, we need to take into account the risks that are inherent in the catchment and in the supply network and in terms of the, the pipe network. As a result of that, we've made decisions in the past years around what we put in place at Mount Grand in terms of its treatment processes, the number of barriers or processes to make sure we take out the produce and other things. At Saint, sorry, at Southern Water Treatment Plant, because it came from a, a more risky catchment, i.e. it had cattle and, and stock in there, so we didn't have the protected catchments of the Mount Grand and Southern, sorry, Mount Grand and, and, sorry, the Extreme. The council of the day decided to put in a, a membrane treatment plant, Southern Water Treatment Plant, which reflected the risk that was inherent in that catchment to make sure that we provided A-grade water to our customers. We take account of those risks, and I have discussions with Gerry over the years about the other bits and pieces he wants to add to make, make sure we manage the risk to provide A-grade drinking water to our public. It's inherent in that grading system. I'm not sure that telling people that we've got a greater risk from water sourced from the Tari as opposed to Deep Creek, but it turns through two different treatment plants that have multiple barriers in place to give, to make sure we provide A-grade water would give them much more information than they have at the moment.
Councillor Volantel, yes, sir.
I think it's probably just using simple logic, but I, I was on the original water committees over 20-plus years ago, when most people thought the water they were drinking was horrible and it was probably graded C or something like that. And we set about, over many years, subsequently spending millions and millions, I mean, it's a huge amount of money, gone into upgrading our treatment plants, Mount Grand and all the others really, we spent a fortune on that. It, it still comes down to the fact that with housing stock getting older and older in the city, you can deliver A-grade water to the street, but what happens between there and the tap is solely on the condition of the piping that's underground from the home to the street, if that is correct? And that's where you get your rust or your foul taste or whatever.
The, the rust can come from two sources. It can come out of some of the older, the older cast iron mains in the city. Then when you hit property boundary, if the property is plumbed up with old galvanised piping, similarly you can get rust.
Exactly, so that when, say someone turns the bath on, haven't turned it on for three months or so and they get that rust through, that's, that's usually the reason. Probably my question is that, why after spending all that money and getting it up to the A grade that we're at, have we not invested a little more in the city's pipes and getting it around the streets as well? It seems to be falling behind.
I can't really, I, I, I don't, I don't have the detail on, on any work backlog in, in terms of the distribution zone. What I can say is there has been quite a bit of work in terms of mains renewals around the city. But until they are, until all the cast iron pipes are either replaced or, or relayed, we have to manage those water quality issues through flushing hydrants from time to time when, when we get complaints.
And you, you've been involved in this for a long time, I know. And, and that goes right back from when we were trying to get cattle out of the, out of the water systems up north. Do you know how, can you just make a, sort of a blanket figure that we need a major overhaul of our city pipes or is it just a minor?
It's, it's part of the ongoing renewals programme, it's in the tens, hundreds of millions of dollars over the next 20, 25 years. There has been, I mean, the council's spent, I think, I remember about, about $65 to $70 million on the treatment plant upgrades. And since that time, there's been more money spent on the, the water network and there's ongoing spend around the renewals programme, but it is a bit of a backlog, as we know.
It's telling you, we were going through a system where we replace pipes that break down. Is our renewal ahead of that, that's wrong?
It's hard without someone like Laurie here, I can't give you the definitive, but we've got a fairly good profile built up around our asset condition. And you know that from the annual plan discussions, that we're looking to increase spend on renewals over the next 10 years to catch up on some of that backlog. Some of that will be water, some of that will be wastewater.
The bottom line for me is that the water we drink or is available to drink in the city now is really high quality.
It is.
Right, councillor Brown, just a question.
Yeah, Jared, my question is really coming back to the papers in front of us. We've had a good discussion on how our water system works, but the reality of it is that we're, we're being asked to discuss about putting in a submission on three methods of assessing our water and the quality of it. And it's quite clear from the paper that there's a survey done and all the stakeholders said they had support for a new grading framework and that they wanted something that would bring in the risk factor into the assessment. Now, do you agree with that statement? Because I think really that's where we've got to start from. And if, if you don't agree that we should be bringing in risk into the methodology, then we need to have a very strong view on a framework that we can suggest in our submission.
The, when, when we looked at the methods, we, we have ranked them. I, I guess when we were looking at the different methods, we were looking for something that was relatively simple. And so we, we've ranked method three as, as our first recommendation. Method two, Rachel, you can correct me here, contains a bit more on, on the risk. So there's, there's no reason why that couldn't be put forward as the council's preferred option as, as a submission to this, to this survey. Let's, let's not forget that the PHRMPs and the drinking water standards are still, there's still legal requirements for us to work to, to running it, running our systems to. I'm not too sure if that's answered your question.
Yeah, well, where I really wanted to find out is that, could we say in our submission that we, our first preference is option three? We see some elements in option two that we would support. And, but then could we not look forward a submission based on that we would like the methodology that's finally to agree to, that would cover the following points? And they were the points that we would see as being crucial to a comprehensive assessment, but also cover a very simple methodology and cover off risk and quality of supply?
Yes, if that's, if that's the wish of, of council, there's, there's, there's no problem with, with rewording and putting some extra narrative around that to emphasise that the, the, the system should have regard to risk management.
Because it's quite clear in their, in their questions, they say, which of the three proposed methods is preferred or should one of the three other alternatives be adopted? Or the aspects of the three proposed methods are supported or opposed and why? So I hope I've got the opportunity to do that.
Right, councillor Wilson.
Um, I, I appreciate where councillor Brown's going, but I actually think there's an overarching issue here. And I've just heard, look, you, you've said that, answered an answer to someone else's question, that this is voluntary. It's not voluntary meeting these standards after July 2014, is it? What have I got? Is it, is it a different?
Standard grading, two different grades.
Two different grades?
Two different things.
Yeah, so, okay. And that's, that's part of the question, so that drinking water standards we have to meet are compulsory after 2014?
There's a requirement to implement public health risk management plans and meet the standards.
By 2014?
The PHRMPs, uh, 2014... Uh, the PHR MPs, uh, uh, two thousand and fourteen, in terms of the, uh, in terms of the standards, that's, that's a little less clear. Um, but to all practical purposes, the, the standards are, they're really, they're really governing the operation of your, of your water treatment plants. And so that's, that's how we operate, that's what we're operating your plants, uh, to make.
Okay, the, the, the point I'm going to is the overarching thing. I have no problems with where they're trying to go, but there are anomalies like the Rocklands Water Scheme and I think the example we were given in our term, where we're aiming for something, and maybe it's the standards, not the grading, but we're aiming for something that doesn't necessarily add value, but it can come in at a much higher cost. And I'm just wondering where I was coming to with my question, Julia. Is this an opportunity to say, look, we understand the direction, we support it in general terms, but you actually have to stand back and say that if it's not adding value, it may be taking us somewhere which will just cost communities greatly and not add value? Um, so, I, I'm, or is this not the place to make that submission? Because I would have thought they've opened the door to have that discussion.
I'm not, I, I'm not su- certainly comments like that, um, you, you can make in a, in a submission. It, um, it's possible to make a, a comment which says, um, yes, council wants to have a grading system or not. If it does, the grading system should more closely align with the PHR MPs and the New Zealand drinking water standards. Uh, because at, at, at the moment, you, you've really got these three, um, approach is possibly the wrong word, but the PHR MPs, they're definitely an approach.
Well, you're working to this.
The standards are.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're kind of linked, but not totally pulled together.
Okay, and that's where I think my confusion on reading this was, I'm probably looking at the drinking standards rather than the grading. But that taken aside, the fact that if I can't understand it and I've sat around the table all night, that I perhaps should have, I'm wondering whether that clarity and it's really Richard's discussion point is we need to get a process which people understand and feel safe about. And if we're not, if, if we're working to a whole lot of different points, then it's really hard to know which ones we're working to. Um, and I think this is one, and that's where I started off. I'm optimistic that we can actually get a better process out of this. But I don't think that the submission we've got at the moment covers that overarching, what are we trying to do here and is it understandable? So that's, that's, yeah, I, I think this way could have worked, be done on, but I feel we have a discussion underway.
Um, a question for me, Jared. Um, we've basically got a submission here which is recommending option or method three, a simplified points-based system. There is also a greater risk emphasis in method two, which you could look at, but your preference, having looked at all of this stuff, is for the submission to stick with the simplified points-based method three. Right, um, I think we've done questions. Can we have any debate on particularly, let's keep it narrow now. We have got the recommendation that this committee approves the submission on method three, which is the simplified points-based system. Councillor Thompson.
To, to the extent that we're recommending method three, which is large, is much more focused around water quality than it is around risk assessment, I acknowledge there's, there's some elements of risk assessment in there, but not to the extent as I understand it, as there would be in the more complex process. My, my concern around confusion is, is lessened. Um, but to the extent that we're making a submission, uh, as were lots of other people around the country, and ultimately somebody will make a decision, which may be, as, as the want of most bureaucracies, that something much more complicated and expensive to administer is the way we should go, despite what you want. Um, then I would at least like to ask staff to give consideration to adding to their submission that for the, in the interest of public understanding, that there be some way to distinguish in that rating system between the water quality as it's ingested and the risks to that water quality that may exist. Because both are important. And I, look, I take Mr. Avery's point that we have melded those together to come up with a scheme and to the extent that it's A, um, it probably doesn't matter too much. But we're actually considering to a national, uh, debate and a national framework. And, and I, you know, if necessary, I can move an amendment to that effect, but I prefer to ask staff to think about it because I think there may be complexities that I don't understand. Um, and if, and, and, but if they were willing to, um, to at least make that as part of their submission, then I would be very comfortable with that.
Cool, councillor Wilson.
Well, I'm just in slight confusion. I didn't hear anyone put the motion, I've got a different motion that I'm happy to put. But has someone actually put the motion? Because councillor Wetherall.
I did try.
I, I, sorry, I didn't hear you, sorry.
I tried with three, but that's okay.
Oh. I, I don't need to move mine, I just, I, I wasn't quite sure what we were debating.
Um, the recommendation on the table, which I understood was moved, uh, by councillor Wetherall. Did we have a second?
I second.
No, that's great.
Uh, councillor Butcher, second.
Yeah, I.
Is, is, is as it sits, would you like to propose an amendment or?
Uh, I was going to suggest that, uh, that the deputy chair since he's here, by his, the mayor and councillor Thompson, since he's expressed some interest in this, be authorized to sign off on a final submission taking into concerns expressed around council table, so at the committee table, to provide better clarity and understandability of the, um, grading systems. And that was just to get that overarching. But I don't think we can, I can't, don't think we can sign off on this particular submission. And that just gives you a process that can do that process by the duty of local, that was.
Well, I'd be happy to make a change, as if that, if, if that can't be resolved, we go back to option three. But no, we'll withdraw, go with that favor, that's fine. That's a butcher, I'm not going to die in the hole for that. Just, just get on with it.
I'll second.
Councillor.
Well, I was just going to endorse what, um, what councillor Thompson was saying. I think that, um, what, what we're really asking is not that, um, option three isn't a good way of measuring an outcome, but that it would be better if you had an option three that analyzed risk separately using a points-based system, simplified points-based system, and measured quality separately using a simplified points-based system and reported those both separately so that we came, or so that the, the, the public had an understanding of both. Um, and I, I mean, it may, it may or may not be so important here, we may end up with AA anyway because we mitigate our risks sufficiently using membranes and other things. Um, but I think what we're saying is that we'd like to be giving the public more information than they currently have and, and, and perhaps not such a reductionist approach to reporting.
Are you proposing an option four, in fact?
No, I'm not, I'm not. It all, what I'm saying is that I think that where councillor Thompson's going with his points is something that I would really endorse.
Okay, so if we were to, if we were to alter the recommendation slightly then, so that we're still approving submission method three, but with a rider, that we would really like to see something that, um, uh, makes it more easy to understand of the public interest, would that keep councillor Thompson?
I thought councillor Wilson had an alternative form of words that was.
Yeah, if you can put them up.
There may be a word in there that's not like the main degree, it's not, you know, for understanding ability.
That's the question.
Um, question for Jared. If, uh, if we end up with a rider to the submission, is that something you'd be comfortable with?
Oh, yes, um, at, at the end of the day, it's got to reflect the wish of, of council.
Councillor Stevenson.
Well, we've got a report here, we know what the submission was. The mayor, councillor Thompson and deputy chair, you've got to work on amending it, but it's all got to be in by the third of May two thousand and three, which is only about five days' time. Yeah, third of May, that's what I said. So, um, it doesn't seem to be that much time to go and alter it.
I don't see that as being an issue because I don't think that there's unit, that there's great disagreement around this table with the approach that staff are taking. Really, it's only around one issue. And that presumably if, if staff were to sit down with, as suggested, and point out entirely sensibly that we're mad, um, then I'm sure we'll take notice of that. Um, if, however, they, they think that it's perfectly, that that's perfectly possible and the addition of a paragraph to their submission would achieve that, then we'll achieve it. It's not like we're having to, we, we're not debating staff's basic recommendations.
I'm, I'm confident that in a short timescale, we can come up with some suitable words as a rider. Um, so if we, do we add this to the recommendation? Is this in addition to, by way of amendment? Councillor, councillor Wetherall, are you happy that we add this to the recommendation?
Absolutely, relax, I'll be put water, get away.
And councillor Butcher, you second it? Yes, all happy?
Aye.
That's fine.
All right, um, actually, do we combine it or make it recommendation two? It's all, we can combine it, yeah? Okay, we combine the recommendation on your order paper with what was just up on the screen?
It's going to have to have a subject to, then you're going to combine them. Because at the moment it says we approve it as it is.
Yeah.
I think as it's written up there, just about replaces it, doesn't it?
I think we just put in the one that was up there, just carrying it is around the submission and the options of what, what the subject matter is, we'll put in that word that was up there. Just to make, so when we locate it in six months' time, we know exactly what it was.
So councillor, uh, sorry, Mayor Cowan.
Just speaking to this, I think this, especially the word comprehension in there points up the fact that one of the outcomes that the powers that be are looking for in here is clearly not that anyone will understand it. Because we have been talking about this for half an hour and I'm frankly had my head spinning and I don't think there's anyone around this table who really gets this. And I did almost go so far as to say that, um, that the danger and the obfuscation in this that's already in, in the survey, not in what our submission is, makes me a little suspicious of what agendas, uh, might be at play in the water market. Uh, so I think that part of what we put in our submission is that one of the outcomes we want is that people can understand the damn thing at the end of it. Because clearly it's taken us a rather long time to get anywhere near that. So I think that we, it won't, it's not a matter of changing, as councillor Thompson said, this is not a matter of changing the public, the, the submission markedly, but just putting a rider in there that, um, you know, clarity and comprehension would be a, a good place to start in terms of outcomes.
Councillor Thompson, you have something else you want to do?
No.
Sorry, councillor Stevenson.
I know, I just remember in Suki Tunnings Day, it seemed to be so much easier. It was just like, well, you've got a paddock, there's opossums in it, there's cows falling into your water supply. You've got problems, you'd better get them out, treat the water. It's going through a whole bunch of rusty pipes up to your house that need to be sorted. I think we need to go back toward the basics.
I'm reminded of a newspaper article not that long ago where they were talking about a billion dollars' worth of rusty pipes that need sorted in the next fifty years.
Exactly.
Um, just to give it that context, we're talking about a big issue here. Councillor Collins.
And briefly, exactly what the mayor said. And I think the public of this city, having spent a hundred million dollars or close to it, to get A-grade water that they believe they're drinking, don't want to be thrown a whole new ballgame of confusion. They said, what are we drinking? They need to know that there's a consistency of level of drinking potable water. And will this provide it? What do you got?
Can I just, can I say the standard that we treat our water won't change? Do we all feel we've had a fair crack at this? In that case, let me put the recommendation with councillor Wilson's added to it. Can you pop that up? Sorry, that is the new recommendation? Can we have it up on the board please, just, just as a reminder of what, what we're doing? So the new recommendation from councillor Wilson and it was seconded by?
Mayor.
Councillor McTavish.
Sorry. You can do it, let's.
That's okay, I thought ours was in, that's fine.
All right, that's what we're voting on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Harry, thank you very much and thank you very much also for your perseverance in, in getting this one completely out there. Thank you, Jared and Rachel. Disgracious. The end of it already. Items for consideration of the chair or the deputy, councillor Harris.
Two items, please. I'd like to get a report for our next meeting on the quantity of materials that we're recycling and the financial outcome of, of those efforts.
Uh, which, which materials?
The materials that we're collecting through our recycling, through our curb collection.
Oh, curbside recycling. Quantity of curbside recycling. And also sing that and the.
And financial implications of the process. Yeah.
Right.
And the second one is, um, the issue of crossings, uh, safe pedestrian crossings on raised areas of roadway that Joan Miller raised at our last meeting. Uh, we've also had concerns that have been expressed on an ongoing basis by councillor Butcher of the crossing that leads across between the Supranas Cafe and, um, the Orchid Forest. Um, I was in Hanmer recently and they have tactile markings, they have markings on the, um, roadways that say pedestrians give way to motorists. And I think if we had something like that in Dunedin, which won't cost us anything too significantly to do, it might resolve the issues that have been raised by Joan Miller from Gray Power and Liz Butcher from the council.
Right.
And if we could have a look at that, please.
I'm feeling a bit sorry somewhere now, you've phrased that.
Does this crossings issue something? I know that you've had some work done already, is this something that you're having progress?
Oh, we can, we can discuss it when there's been a response back to councillor Butcher about the raised platforms. I've met with, so Joan Miller, we met down in South Dunedin.
Yes.
Uh, the, the chair and deputy mayor myself and seemed to have met with Joan Miller down in South Dunedin. There was a discussion at that point. So we can talk about that, the Supranas, um, Orchid one to that as well. And, uh, the report.
It's the same in George Street as well.
Right. It's been discussed, it's been raised a number of times in response to that. We can talk about it with many chairs and then see how you want to deal with it.
Okay, cool. Anyone else? Thank you very much for your patience and your attendance today.